Good evening everyone and welcome to yet another very interesting and informative session with Desh Kapoor. Welcome Desh.
Thank you so much Jayadev. Thanks for calling me again.
So Desh, just recently we had the Prime Minister Modi celebrating his 75th birthday. And we had many international political leaders like Donald Trump put in, you know, giving him a personal call and especially Donald Trump, you know, he said that happy birthday, a good friend and he addressed Modi ji by his first name as well, calling him Narendra. So coming to the first point, Desh, that Donald Trump has realized that, you know, his bullying tactics is not working with India and that he cannot stop, you know, India from buying Russian oil and despite, you know, fifty percent tariffs and all those things. So Donald Trump has suddenly realized that all these tactics are not working with Modi ji. And then now he's trying to, you know, make up and reset the relationship with Modi ji. So how do you see this whole, you know, thing between Trump and Modi ji, the equation as of now?
I think it's a great question. Actually, like first of all, I think it's been, I have not seen in my lifetime, like I don't know, like if it had happened before that, a birthday or some important celebratory like event of an Indian leader was celebrated across the world by different world leaders. I don't think this has happened before, even in the times of Nehru or Indira Gandhi. Because but I I've never seen, this is unprecedented first of all. Because everyone, whether it is Australia's Prime Minister or, you know, other countries, everybody is, you know, calling him up or at least they're giving him a message, you know, on Twitter itself. So that's like one part of the whole story. The this question about Trump, so there are two, there are two ways to look at it. I find it very hard to believe that Trump is either so friendly or so unfriendly with anyone. I think he has a very transactional relationship with everyone. I cannot, you know, bring myself to believe that Trump has taken such a U-turn in such a short time. And sent his, you know, like person to, you know, do the negotiations all over again. So because the the issues remain where they were, I don't think India is going to change in terms of dairy as well as in terms of agriculture as much as they want it. Because their aim is very clear about where they want to go. Now, I think we should be wary about like what is, what he's trying to do. Because I I won't trust completely where this is going. And the reason is because see what happened with Japan. When the Japanese, you know, Prime Minister did that deal with the US giving, you know, promising five hundred fifty or five hundred billion dollars almost as a production money and he had to resign because it was such a damning deal for Japan. So as, you know, looking at it from the Indian standpoint, I'll be extremely wary about what he's trying to do because see, like imagine a scenario where these guys, whoever the negotiators are, are able to push through a deal, even a mini deal. Right? And using the entire media, the, you know, social media as well as the other campaigns, the the way they keep on doing and using opposition, the way it happened in Japan as well. They could easily start a campaign saying that, you know, Modi ji has sold India out. And use that pressure to take Modi ji out. Because see, we have to remember, in the last month or so, this entire quote-unquote deep state plus Trump plus CIA have tried their level best. And we have discussed this in our earlier, you know, episodes also that they have done their level best to take Modi ji out. Why would they change course now? So, so is this a way to do what they did in Japan to the Japanese Prime Minister? You know, the same thing at a much larger, much, you know, bigger scale with Modi ji? You know, that could be a possibility as also. So we should be very wary about where this is going. So in in the coming weeks and months, if a mini trade deal is done, we should be very careful. And the government of India should be very careful about how they are articulating it. And how they're setting the narrative because the opposition, all the, you know, the sold-out media that is there, they can easily twist it the way they have twisted the, you know, the SIRs, the CIA, the NR, see everything they have twisted, right? They can twist this also. So one needs to be very careful because I don't think they have changed course. I don't think because if on the one side Trump is trying to do a deal, on the other side, he's trying to tell the G7 to go and like put sanctions on India. I don't think he has changed this thing course, right? So, yeah, so one should be very careful about how these things are happening. Because there could be other things behind the scenes that may be going on. So that, that is how I would see.
Yeah. So a lot of things, you know, the way Charlie Kirk was shot, he was a Trump loyalist. And so back home, does Trump have control of his own, you know, government and whether the the deep state, you know, is, you know, is he, you know, being pressurized by the deep state or is he, you know, working against them is the question.
Yeah, I think the way, you know, the way I see it is that there there are different tiers to the deep state, right? As far as the fourth and fifth, we have discussed this, one, two, three, four, five, you know, five tiers. Fourth and fifth tier is where, especially the fourth tier is where people like Donald Trump and Soros and the rest of the people play. So, so the way I would like say is that as far as Trump is concerned, he, he has an adversary. Like he has the adversarial, you know, relationship with the existing or the incumbent, like deep state, like lower tiers, right? So there is a like game going on between them. And like he has already said that he wants to actually go ahead and start indicting or, you know, starting cases against Soros. So if that is where he is going, so there is a game going on between both the sides. And that will keep going on. And, you know, they, they have said that they have caught the guy who killed Charlie Kirk. I am, you know, like I want to be sure that it is, you know, that person because generally in these things, they do tend to catch the, you know, the fall person because the guy who shot was one of, has to be among the top one percent snipers because that guy hit the carotid nerve in the neck in one go. And that is where even the best marksmen who are there, that is where they hit. And and it's not that easy. So, so either this guy, whoever this guy is, has some, has had some really amazing training and is one heck of a sniper or they have caught the wrong person or and, you know, have the fall guy for that. Like whatever it is, you know, like probably we'll never know the truth. As far as, you know, the Charlie Kirk thing is concerned, I think, like, you know, everybody here in, you know, America, you know, and they're not saying it out loud, but everybody is really afraid. Because this could start something which is uncontrollable. Right? Because there is a, you know, just like in London, there were protests, you know, the, the so-called right wing and the so-called left wing, you know, both were having their own protests. And at one point, they they almost, you know, clashed with each other. The same thing at a much larger scale could actually happen in the US and and that's what people are afraid of. So, so in both the cases, you know, whether it is, and and, you know, the left people, like people on the left side or the, you know, the democratic side or the anti-Trump people, they have been mocking, you know, the Charlie Kirk murder. I, like, I can't understand that, but, but that is how, how vicious and how strongly, you know, anti-each other these people are. So, so it's not going to be easy going forward. And I think every such act actually pushes this society towards clash, internal clash. So I think that is what, like that is where I, you know, like I find it to be most disturbing actually. Like obviously, you know, like one thing is there that the cancel culture, you know, has been there. And, you know, they thought whoever it was, they thought the best way to cancel Charlie Kirk because they couldn't debate with him was to just kill him, which is, you know, where this society has really come to now.
Yeah. So coming to the next point, Desh, is that Rahul Gandhi after his Malaysian trip, now he has wished Modi ji on his birthday and now also the fact that he has said that regarding Punjab, that the states suffered a huge loss because of the floods. And so he estimated the loss at around twenty thousand crores. And only rupees thousand six hundred crores initial relief was announced by the union government. So now we know that, you know, Modi ji will criticize, I mean, sorry, Rahul Gandhi will criticize Modi for anything. So how do you see this, you know, whole thing of, you know, Rahul Gandhi, you know, continuously trying to, you know, get some points, whether it is a vote chori or anything? So how do you see this?
See, basically, you know, so it's not just only sixteen hundred crores that, you know, that's the amount that has been given in the recent flood relief package, right? But there is, over the last three years, if you really look at it, almost twelve thousand crores have been given in various schemes, right? In in different, different ways. So, you know, whether it was the PM Kisan, PM Avas Yojana and different schemes, they have not reached the people there in Punjab properly because of, you know, the politics of Amadmi Party. But that money has been given and the fact is that the revenues in Punjab, which used to be at one time a very rich state, have been just, you know, looted and plundered by all these politicians. First it was Congress and now it was Amadmi Party. And and that's where they have brought it to. So, so there is a, you know, clovered pivot strategy that is followed where the, they use, I mean, the the fundamental, you know, that clone, the clovered pivot strategy is to use the normal, you know, schemes of the government to such an extent that actually it fails. The government's, you know, administration fails. Now, in this case, there is another corollary of that, where is that the state, state's revenues and, you know, like income is pressured so much that the state actually goes bankrupt and that puts pressure on the center. And this is the strategy that almost each and every opposition party has been following. They've been looting each and every state, they've been making it bankrupt and then they are blaming the center. This is a classic example of clovered pivot strategy. And and this is the way to actually start and, you know, expand like anarchy within any country. And and that's what these guys have been doing. So, like, what is the basis of that twenty thousand crore? There is no real basis to it. He has just come, like if he was so smart, he would have, you know, done like much better things in his life. He has not been able to, like he can't even calculate things properly, like, you know, like he uses different numbers. Just wait for one week and he'll say another number now. You know, twenty thousand crores now, after two, three days, he'll come up with thirty thousand crores or something. That's how, you know, like facetious this guy is. So, so I think it is, like, you know, it's just strange how it worked, how he does, you know, work. And, you know, coming back from like Malaysia, I think that is the, the working, your marching orders, like you must have gotten. And go and keep on, you know, hitting at the Prime Minister, which is exactly what he's trying to do. And this, this entire thing will expand, like it won't go down, you know, in the coming days. So, yeah, so it will keep going on.
Yeah. Also, what do you think his trip to Malaysia was about?
To get orders, to get the next orders. And because, see, like we have discussed, this is the time that when they are trying very hard to, to take out Modi ji from the power. And and they'll keep on trying, you know, very hard to do this. And and that is where, you know, these trips come in, you know, whenever he's trying to orchestrate something like this. This is a very important time for India, for Modi ji and for the future of the country. Where, you know, all the, all adversaries, even people who were along with India have become adversaries and they have very, very few allies at this moment because they, everybody who is anti-India, who was trying to bring down India, who was trying to get to power, they have been blocked by Modi ji and his people. So, so they are trying their level best and and that is where I think Rahul Gandhi's, you know, visit to Malaysia comes in. So, like I don't see anything good coming out of this, you know, like it will just be the same old thing as it has always been.
Yeah. So, Desh, recently, you know, a very interesting development has happened. And you had Sonia and Rahul Gandhi on Tuesday, you know, called on the Prime Minister of Mauritius, Naveen Chandra Ramgulam in Delhi. So what was this, what do you think this was about? Is there anything more to it or is it just an official sort of visit?
So Mauritius is a very, very important country and area for India. You know, in twenty twenty-one, I remember that there was this, like investigation, online investigation that was done by Al Jazeera. They saw there was a ship near Mauritius, like one of the islands, it's called Agalega, the Agalega Island, where the ship was just moving just a few meters in one day. And then they tried to trace that ship and they found that it was actually owned by one company in India. And that company was aligned or allied with the Indian Navy. That's when they realized that India is actually trying to create a naval base in Mauritius' Agalega Island. That's like what they were saying and the photographs, you know, they took through satellite, that kind of, you know, corroborated what they were saying, at least like that was their story. So Mauritius, you know, like when India was trying to create its own bases, India tried to create another base in Sichels. Now China actually jumped in, it, you know, changed, did a regime change and India could not create that. So Mauritius in that way is very, very important, very critical for India and it is not something that China wants. So, so when we look at it from that standpoint, then it seems quite interesting that, you know, Rahul Gandhi, who has, you know, done a deal with the CCP, would actually go ahead and meet Mauritius' Prime Minister during his visit. The interesting thing is, earlier this year, I think, or maybe last year, he, he did say, like in one of the, you know, speeches, the Prime Minister of Mauritius, that, you know, I would like to come to your fourth, you know, victory celebration, like in your fourth term. So, so he was actually trolling the India alliance at that time. But like what I'm trying to say is that I, like I feel that he and such other, you know, leaders of such other countries, they are like strongly behind Modi ji and and that's a person they actually admire. There could be another thing that, there could also be a, you know, message that, you know, Rahul Gandhi may have carried for somebody else, that he might want to convey to the Prime Minister of Mauritius. So, so there could be multiple reasons why he was meeting, but and and another like reason could be that he's trying to show that he has that, you know, weight as a leader, you know, by like meeting the foreign dignitaries, which is not something that, which is something that we all know that he doesn't have, like it's more for show.
Yeah. Also, Desh, regarding the Bihar election and it seems that there's a lot of rift between Tejasvi, Yadav and, you know, Rahul Gandhi and Tejasvi wants to contest all the seats. So what, what, it's kind of hilarious that all these things are happening in between Tejasvi and Rahul Gandhi before the Bihar election.
Yeah, they, see, these guys are, I mean, they're all egotists, they're all, you know, nepo kids. And they all want power. You leave them alone, give them a long rope and they'll go and hang themselves because that is how they are. So, so in terms of India alliance, I think like it was always a failure, but as we go forward, like this will become even more apparent and more pronounced. Because, see, that guy, Tejasvi Yadav, actually feels that he owns Bihar. And, you know, like Rahul Gandhi actually feels like a monarch, like himself, like a prince. He, he, he thinks he owns India, even though he has won nothing. And because of that, there will always be this, you know, anybody who has a little bit of self-respect or some ego in himself or herself will always end up having a fight with Rahul Gandhi. You know, within the India alliance. And and that's how it like it is. Because, see, if this was the general election, then it might be a different thing. This is the Bihar election. You know, Congress does not have much say within Bihar. It's the local politicians who have. Like I don't think Congress has won in Bihar for a long time. So, so basically, I think it's the, like these kids, you know, these parties, local parties, were going to be the main draw there. So that is why, and Rahul Gandhi doesn't want to, you know, give in to him. So, so this will like go on and, like, I don't, like, I don't think they'll be able to do a very good job of Bihar.
Do you think that BJP and NITI Shilwin easily?
I think so. I think they, they will be, you know, like I don't want to call it a landslide, but it will be like big win for them.
Yeah. So also, you know, one of the tactics of the opposition parties is to, you know, let all these illegal Bangladeshis, you know, just come and settle in a state and then change the demography and thereby, you know, try to win the election in that particular state. So now with that in place, you had a special intensive revision, as all of you know. Now, in a very important development, the voters of Delhi will have to present an identity proof if their names do not appear in the voter list of two thousand two as per the SIR planned by the Election Commission. So from Bihar now, it has gone to Delhi, the SIR. So I think this whole SIR will roll out for all the states gradually in India, right?
Right. And I think that's the way it should be because, see, the thing is, the, the, the demography of India has been polluted and messed up. But due to all these, you know, illegal, like, you know, refugees or whatever, you know, like people coming in from Bangladesh, from Myanmar, like the Rohingyas. And people who have a soft corner for Rohingyas should remember that even Amnesty International, which is not really pro-Hindus or pro-India, even Amnesty International has, has brought out a report some time back where it said that in Rakhine province, where Rohingyas were there, they have done not one, not one, but multiple massacres of Hindu. In one case, they actually killed hundred Hindus in a execution style in one of the villages. So, so anyone who tells India to get Rohingyas in, you know, into India, should, you know, ask the question whether, like, would, would they have been able to say this to the Jews in Israel? To actually let the Nazis into Israel? Because that, that's exactly how these guys are. They have done executions of Hindus specifically, like within their own towns. So, so these are the people with that kind of mindset, they are the ones who have come over to India. And and they are, you know, interview after interview and discussions after discussions with them shows very clearly that they have just one, you know, objective. They, they are going towards that. So, so in that sense, it is imperative that the government actually takes care of this and removes the people who should not be there at all, who who have no good, you know, objective for India at all. Like, like that's what these guys are trying to do. So I think the SIR process is very good. It should be done in a way that, you know, they can defend themselves and they can, you know, share. And I think, because, you know, journalists like Rajdeep Sarthasai and all these guys, they will try their level best to, to like discredit this whole thing. Because that's how they are. The opposition will also try to discredit. And that is where the highest form of integrity within this process is extremely important. So, so I think I was, like I was really happy with the way the Chief Election Commissioner had come and shared, you know, answered all the questions or, you know, all the allegations. I I think that's how aggressive the Election Commission needs to be.
Yeah. So Desh, on an ending note, just recently in Nepal, you have an interim Prime Minister, Sushila Karke. And she will hold her first conversation with the Prime Minister Modi. Now, as far as this is concerned with the whole Nepal situation, how things, you know, turned violent as we all saw. Now, how do you see the current interim Nepal PM, Sushila Karke? Do you see her, you know, in control of the situation in Nepal as of now?
Nepal is a wild card. And and the reason why I'm saying this is because I don't think anybody understands who really has it under control. Now, uh there are two major powers, China and US, both are, have been trying to actually get us. Uh stronghold within Nepal. You know, that's the reality. So this whole thing that was created for Gen Z and all that, there were indications that. Uh US and CIA were involved because just before that, Donald Lou had been there. But we all also know that China has actually been entrenched within Nepal for a long time. As has been the ISI, uh for a long time. Now it's, uh you know, all these years. Uh since Modi ji came, he is also aware how important Nepal is. I cannot believe at all that India's intelligence and India's, uh you know, agencies have not made inroads. They would have. Now, so, so if you really look at that small country. And the powers and the forces that are involved there. You would understand that it is actually a, a, uh you know, like boiling pot. Of so many powers and forces acting for and against each other, right? So, uh if. Uh US and China are going to, uh you know, battle it out. Then India might actually, uh try to actually, uh like work it out in a different way, right? Uh like try to make its own position, own place, like within that entire. Uh framework so that uh they can do what needs to be done, you know, like which is to make it as a buffer for India. And if possible, to have some kind of control over that quality because. Uh I I I don't think Nep- uh like Nepalese right now are thinking it like in a strategic way. Because they haven't uh done so in a long time. Uh so I can understand that they love their country and they feel that it is sovereign and all those things. But they are actually, uh you know, putting themselves in great danger, you know, by. Uh showing themselves as, uh you know, anti-India and all that because no other force. Will be as conducive to Nepalese as India is. Uh you know, no matter what they do, what they say. So in that sense, I feel that, you know. Because Modi ji and because other people within his government have not said anything much, you know, about Nepal. I have a feeling that they actually have something, uh some. Some plan for Nepal that we don't know of, but it is going to be something positive. Like in terms of how India wants it to be happening there. So that's how I see it, simply because, uh uh there are a lot of interests. And Modi ji has been exceptionally quiet about it.
Yeah, we will have to wait and watch how things progress as of now.
Right, exactly.
So that, this, that was a wonderful session and we will see you ag- again next week. Uh thank you again for coming to our show, as always. Uh Jai Hind.
Jai Hind.
And Jai Shri.
Jai Shri.